Good afternoon, everyone. It's 6:00 and we'll call to order the February 28th meeting of the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Viviana, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Debbie Moore?
Here.
Patrick Conwell let us know that he was going to be absent. Cynthia Meyer?
Here.
Richard Gardman?
Here.
Matt Lassen?
Here.
Cheryl Lee let us know that she was also not going to be in attendance. Greg Sherry?
Here.
Tom Dawson?
Here.
Pablo Serna?
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum and we will proceed. Second order of business is citizen comments. And at this time, three-minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic. To address the commission, please submit a fully completed request card to the commission chairperson prior to the beginning of the meeting. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, if a citizen discusses any item not on the agenda, city commissions cannot discuss issues raised or make any decision at this time. Instead, city commissions are limited to making a statement of specific information or a recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry. Issues may be referred to city staff for research and possible future action. It's not the intention of the city of Bastrop to provide a public forum for the embarrassment or demeaning of any individual or group. Neither is it the intention of the commission to allow a member of the public to slur the performance, honesty, and/or integrity of the commission as a body or any member or members of the commission individually or collectively. Or threatening language directed toward the commission and/or any person in the commission's present will not be tolerated. I do have one forum for Ishmael Harris who wishes to speak on your citizen comments. Mr. Harris, you have three minutes.
Good evening, P&amp;Z Commission. I just want to introduce myself. I'm Ishmael Harris. I'm running for place one on the city council. I'm really excited about the future of Bastrop and so I'm going to sit in here and kind of see what you have to say about where we're going with the changes. So, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Come back. We're here every month, on the fourth, on the final Thursday of the month, 6:00. Alrighty. Item number three, items for individual consideration. Consider action to approve meeting minutes for the November 29, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Twenty nineteen, 2018, seems like it was so long ago.
Two months.
Wow. It was just Christmas Day before yesterday. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes? Are there any corrections, addition, or deletions? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
They were second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Approved unanimously. Thank you. Item 3B, presentation and discussion of building Bastrop to include an update of progress of development codes since design code rodeos by Matt Lassen of Simple City Design.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Matt Lewis with Simple City Design and we're excited to be before you all tonight to talk about the building Bastrop effort and where we are to date and what we've done to this point. Building Bastrop is an effort that started in the summer about rewriting the land development regulations, recognizing the flooding and the issues that come along with that and how Bastrop can plan for its future. You know, and do we plan Bastrop one lot at a time? Is it strategic? How do we link back the comprehensive master plan, your transportation thoroughfare master plans, and all of the efforts that you all have put forth to lay out the foundation for the city? And how does that get integrated back into the overall development standards as we move forward? It feels like just yesterday we were sitting in this room having this conversation since we've been with head down just writing code and analyzing Bastrop and reviewing what you all have on the books and reviewing the DNA reports and the analysis that we had done previously when we started for the community. And we gathered a lot of information through these public workshops, the design rodeo and the code rodeo. So, as you all recall, we joined to have dialogues about streets and housing options, infill development. We talked about economic development and the future of Bastrop and how it may start to shape. And as we did that, we hired illustrators and designers to truly get the numerical value of Bastrop and see what it would look like if we applied it into a code in a modern-day time. And how might the development standards and the development processes foster the developments that are going to be timeless and authentic Bastrop, that create fiscal sustainability, that create timeless places, walkable places? And all of these goals linked back to the conversations we had at the design rodeo, at the code rodeo, as well as your comprehensive master plan and all of the efforts that took place within those realms. Back from the code rodeo, we came up with the building, excuse me, Bastrop block code, the Bastrop building block code. We're calling it the B3 code. And it is a code that is unlike many other codes. It's not full of arbitrary regulations and minimum lot standards, but rather it's looking at the elements that it takes to create holistic and complete communities, how it can be a timeless code. What we're doing on the front end is to ensure that the development standards that we are drafting match, one, the patterns on the ground, it can create fiscally viable products for the development community, and that the work on the front end ensures that the staff receives a code that they can administer, not some set of regulations that doesn't match the overall community. And so we're being very mindful as we go forward with that. And our starting place again was here. The original foundation for the town was laid out in farm lots. Those farm lots were 720 feet by 720 feet. Those got broken down into 330 feet by 330 feet with 55.5 or 60 feet of right-of-way in between the four building blocks. This pattern is very unique to Bastrop and it allowed for a very unique and flexible environment, which led to an environment like this, where you have some areas where you have very large lots. There's quarter-acre lots here. And you've got areas where you have really tiny lots, you know, 18-foot, 10-foot. Pete's Shoe Store, it's 1,000 square foot, I'm sorry, it's 1,072 square feet and has 1,000 square-foot building on it. These patterns that are historic to Bastrop, that are representative of your culture, your authenticity, have been incrementally written out of your existing codes. You can't build under these development patterns anymore. And we started with a series of hypothetical questions of what if we, and how might we actually start to introduce these back into the environment to bring back this pattern of development so that Bastrop can continue to build in an authentic way and build in a fiscally sustainable way and allow for entrepreneurs that have a little bit of capital to come in and buy a lot in Bastrop and maybe build a house upstairs and a shop downstairs, really thinking through the application of workforce housing and real human situations when you write development codes. This is not a hypothetical code that doesn't impact humans. It impacts our development. It impacts how we manage stormwater, how we put light standards, how our streets get integrated, how the sidewalks get integrated, how far are the street trees, what are the turn radiuses of the curbs? How does it get administered from the staff? What's required from the applicant? How do we keep it as affordable as possible to enter into the process, right? And so, all of these questions are at the forefront of the code. And again, as I stated when I started, everything that we're doing is linking back to the comprehensive master plan, which is an adoption process that sets your 30,000-foot view of the city for the next 30 years or until 2036, saying, "We aspire to accomplish." And how do we get there? The code elements are the number-one set of regulatory tools that govern your development projects. I say this quite often, everything you see going vertical in Bastrop meets your minimum standards. And so, you have to really analyze the outputs of development and are standards recreating the outputs that we like? Are they creating timeless places? Are they creating lovable, adaptable, flexible? And if not, why? And if so, how? And those types of items are being evaluated as we progress through this. So, we started this conversation with knowledge. And knowledge is the ability to have the information. And when you connect the information to the dots of knowledge, you get experience. And we start to see patterns forming, I'm sorry, forming together. And if we really challenge ourselves, then we can start thinking creatively. And so, how can we write creative codes that are adaptable, flexible, yet predictable? How do we analyze site conditions where maybe a tree is within the first 25 feet where your current codes say that the house must go? What if we allowed for a flexible building envelope instead of minimum lot dimensions that would allow the house or the buildings or the parking areas or the drive aisles to move around on the lots and be more flexible, rather than having clear rigid standards in a one-size-fits-all, right? And how do we make it geographically sensitive to the areas of Bastrop? And so, that's what we've set our path on. And the foundation of our work is setting out the foundation for the city elements. And city foundations are public health, safety, and welfare. Under the state local government code, that is the jurisdiction and the due diligence of the city, life, safety. They regulate public infrastructure in the public realm. Those are the streets and the parks and the civic spaces, the institutions, the city hall facilities, those types of things. And then, public utilities, it's another critical piece. So, knowing what, where the city's wheelhouse is and thinking about where the private development wheelhouse is, is helping us establish the regulations about how the public realm, the city facilities, and the private realm interact. And what we DNA analysis is that that is one of the most critical pieces that determines the authenticity. And it's how the buildings relate to the street, how the awnings go over the sidewalks, the placement of the buildings, the locations of the parking. The elements of development in your downtown are very similar to elements of new developments, but the features are rearranged. Parking's going in the front, the buildings are pushed back, you know, generally 75, 50 feet, 100 feet, 150 feet, depending on the dimensions of the parking lots. And so, the orientation of development's gotten out of whack. But it's required by your codes. You're getting what you're asking for. So, going forward, we have been very methodical to test these standards that we're coming up with on real tracts of land in Bastrop, Texas. So, the first view I'm going to show you, this was a design we did of a neighborhood using the numerical values of the DNA downtown. These are 330-foot blocks by 330-foot blocks with a variety of housing types. One of the things we continuously heard at the design rodeo and the code rodeo was, "We want a variety of housing types. We want walkable neighborhoods." And these elements that you have create that. And so, what we're doing is we're testing these out. This was an example of a neighborhood done at the code rodeo. And the view I'm going to show you will be a view perspective of the area in green. Oh, I have a highlighter here. And this is a residential neighborhood that fronts onto a central green. And in order to make the 330-foot blocks, instead of having a street connection, it has a pedestrian path. So, you'll notice that block there is 330 feet, this block here is 330 feet, and the view perspective I'm going to show you is going to be looking down that 330-foot block. So, we had an illustrator come in and draw the designs that we were creating. So, we can write development standards around these designs using the standards that are emulated in your downtown area. This is one example. This is a variety of large houses, small houses, houses with big front porches, double, two-story houses with double porches. And we're showing that this type of development pattern's illegal under your existing regulations. You can't build this because you won't meet the minimum setbacks, your lot dimensions don't allow for this type of product. We're saying, "What if we coded these types of products in and allowed for courtyard products?" It'd be a new housing product in Bastrop for residents to have options to live in. It's flexible, it's adaptable, and allows parking to be located in the rear without interruption into the public realm, which is the green spaces, the houses all front the central green. And so, it was one hypothetical scenario on a real tract of land that we developed here, but again, testing out the fiscal sustainability to make sure that the actual numbers work. The next one I'm going to show you is a design from an aerial perspective, looking into the development. This is a aerial, so it's looking from a high level all the way back, and it actually goes all the way to these townhomes. Stormwater management is critical. And this development that we designed here, again, another real vacant parcel of land in Bastrop, Texas, that we use the numerical standards of the DNA downtown to code. So, we coded in townhomes and mansion homes, which are like four-plexes or eight-plexes, into a house that looks like a mansion house, brownstones, townhouses that are really narrow lots, shared side walls or attached units, and then as well as mixed-use, you know, residential over retail. And maybe it's three to five stories, right? And how might that work or fit in Bastrop and where might it go? This is an example located on the frontage road of Highway 71. And so, this aerial view that we drew, looking down into the neighborhood. So, you're looking from an aerial, looking down into this area. These again are 330-foot blocks by 330 feet, sticking to the original creation of the way that the farm lots got broken up in Bastrop, integrated stormwater management into a, as a feature of the neighborhood. And when it's raining, you know, the kids stay out of that and it floods. And when it's not, they go catch, you know, crawdads and play in the ditches, right? And get muddy and it provides an experience. These are life experiences. And we've coded these types of places out. It doesn't have to be complicated. It doesn't have to be piped underground. You can handle it through open swell. And so, this is a light, inexpensive way of handling stormwater management in a dense development. This development tracked on, we did a variety of housing types because the community wanted it. And so, we wanted to test it and see, "Do you really want it? And how much do you really want?" So, this block here is about 75 units an acre. That's probably three times what your existing zoning ordinance would allow. But it allows for workforce housing to be integrated into close proximity to their working, to where they work. It allows for someone that has a little bit of capital to come in and buy a small lot so that they can build a shop house or their house. It provides an ability to live in close proximity to diverse socioeconomic groups. You have tiny houses back here with townhomes or brownstones, mancered roof, three-story developments here, where you've got ground floor retail running into a central street, tree-lined streets with street trees every 30 feet, so you get a canopy of shade, which is extremely important for walkability. And so, all of the elements of the development code are important to study in this realm. So, we can say, "Is this the right standard? Is this the right dimension? If so, where does it go?" And so, what we're doing now is we're breaking the community up into zoning districts, right, for the new development code. And the zoning districts are going to be geographically sensitive, meaning that each district will have its own set of regulations that emulate the patterns of that area. For example, where you have the Houston Toad Habitat, it requires 20% impervious cover per one acre. Well, the development standards there are going to be completely different than the development standards along Highway 71. The development standards along Highway 71 would be inappropriate in the downtown area. From, you know, signage to parking regulations to sidewalk widths to building placement, elements are really critical and the code pieces fit the individual characteristics. Recently, the city council adopted a purpose statement that highlighted how they wanted it to be a geographically, no, that it required, actually, let me rephrase that, that it required that it be geographically sensitive, that it be authentic to Bastrop, and that it be fiscally sustainable. And so, that's our charge from your elected officials. And we wanted to make sure that the planning commission was aware of that and that this actually is part of our charge as we move forward. I've got one more development to show you and then we can have a dialogue and a conversation. This again is a real tract of land in Bastrop, Texas. And what we did is said, "What if you provided a courtyard in the middle with a pavilion that people could gather and you had a wide variety of housing types? Small, you know, tiny houses to a six-plex that looks like a, you know, a downtown building to townhomes to row houses." And so, we did it as a design and we drew it. And so, looking down into the neighborhood, everything is, again, created off of the existing framework. We handled parking, stormwater management, everything's going to be handled through the development. And here's a view perspective of what the development would look like. So, in the foreground here, you have normal craftsman-style houses. This is one of my favorite buildings over here. And this is a downtown six-plex. This could be residential over retail, it could be retail on the ground floor, office on the second floor with residential above. These could be for sale units, they could be for rent units. But it's integrating brand-new housing types and building patterns back into the code. And in the last, you know, few decades that the codes got modified here, you've coded these types of places out. They've been written out of your code as allowable places to build. And so, we're challenging ourselves to integrate them back in into a fiscally sustainable way, geographically sensitive, that matches the patterns of, again, using geographically sensitive, fiscally sustainable, authentic, walkable, and timeless, and, you know, anything else that the commission would see important as we proceed through writing these codes. At this point, we're, we have been head down writing codes, challenging ourselves on these norms. We, I've worked in three different cities and zoning was typical. And it was so easy for us to come into Bastrop and deliver a typical zoning code until the community said that's not what they wanted. And so, it challenged us to really think back about what creates great places and great communities and what you have on the ground. And what we've discovered is that you have the answers here. And the numerical values that break up from the farm lot to the building blocks are timeless. And so, we've been basing a lot of our standards off of this. They don't work everywhere because, you know, some areas don't have the ability to build out in a grid because of topography, steep slopes, the impervious cover requirement and the toad habitat. So, we're really challenging ourselves to say, "What are the appropriate development patterns there? And how do we write development regulations that are flexible, adaptable, and timeless for you all that also achieve all of these goals?" So, that is an update for where we are right now. I appreciate the time and I'm here to answer any questions you all may have. Thank you.
Do you have any idea when P&amp;Z might begin, considering some of the zoning changes that you have, you are recommending?
At this time, we do not, ma'am. We're going back to city council on March the 12th that we'll get an update to them and hopefully we can, we'll have more information at that point.
An update as to what? Are you not done looking at the different areas and?
We're still writing individual standards for the zoning districts. We're still working with the city staff. We had a meeting today that lasted from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We, an all-day staff meeting, going over the zoning districts and talking about the development standards. How do we handle parking? You know, what are the parking requirements? How does stormwater get handled? All of these different elements need to be calibrated in order to be localized to Bastrop. And that's, we're in the process of at this point.
Best guess, um, at six months, a year, nine months? You have no idea?
Definitely not a year. Hopefully, hopefully a few months and we'll be back and we can start having a dialogue about architecture or about individual characteristics of the code. That's the hope. I think we can take this in bite-sized pieces. Maybe we look at geographic areas and like, "Let's talk about this geography and what's appropriate. Here's what we've got currently. What do you all think about the standards? Yeah, we like that. We don't like that. Change this." You know, those types of conversations would be really important to bring back to the commission.
If one area doesn't have any impact on another area that you might still be working on, but you're done here, could we, we take it like that the bite size that you're talking about, that we could, are you waiting until everything is done before we start considering? What is, what are your sense of the council?
From my understanding, I believe the codes would be adopted as a package, as one...
Oh, I understand that.
But for review.
But we have to review all the different areas and the different codes.
I think the geography would be a great way of breaking it down to where we could start studying it in that way. This, and I don't know if staff wants to chime in on this, but I believe that that would be a really appropriate bite-sized way of delineating the code so it's not so overwhelming.
Yeah, great. I think some of the things that Matt's talking about are like, we're going to take a look at parking and sidewalks and tree preservation and some of those things that are more policy-driven. And once we get feedback from council, we're going to be taking those things as kind of chunks prior to the formal adoption of it in its entirety. So, we can certainly look at bringing some of those items that council's already, you know, set a policy on. We can bring them to you as a discussion and start having those conversations prior to actually seeing it formally adopted in the code.
I would like to see those before you take them to council. I'd like to see what you're planning on taking to and see if it's something that we're going to be comfortable with when you take it to council.
Well, I think the things that we are taking to council, council, or commissioner, are going to be policy-guided type things, which your council sets the policy. So, I'd be happy to bring those afterwards. But we truly do need the policymakers to make a policy decision, you know, prior to, you know, bringing them before you. But I certainly don't have a problem doing that after, after they've had a chance to set that policy. Then they, bring them to you and vet them and get them to a place where we're comfortable to insert them into the codes, if that makes sense.
Maybe we need to have a joint session with city council and planning and zoning when that goes on the table for discussion.
We certainly plan to do that. I think our formal schedule had several of those built in. And as we formalize a schedule moving forward, we'll certainly build those joint work sessions back in.
Help me, help me to clarify something. You were talking about in certain areas, parking was here and in another area, parking was, could be different. So, Matt just says that the city is going to, has that policy on parking, but you can't have a one-size-fits-all, can you?
It's going to be difficult. And parking is going to be a major driver. It takes up a lot of space, a lot of land area, and, you know...
And that's why I'm trying to understand how city's going to set policy on parking when parking's going to be different throughout the area.
Sure. So, you can handle policy, or parking in several different ways.
And it's not just parking, whatever you're going to be setting policy on.
Sure. I mean, take anything, take, you know, tree preservation, you know, how far, what is council comfortable with? What are their boundaries comfortable with in guiding that policy decision? And then, within those policy boundaries, what is P&amp;Z as a recommending body going to recommend be implemented into those codes? So, I think where you all are going to be critical in that is council's going to say, "Okay, our policy, guiding policy on parking is to regulate it this way or that way." And then, you all as a recommending body will look at that and work that through all the different zoning districts along with staff and that and package it in a way that makes sense within that policy. But first, it's a, like Matt said, it's a very complex issue. I think you all can appreciate that. And it's not a one-size-fit-all approach. So, we need that, that policy. Do we regulate it? Do we not? Is it a utility? What does that look like? And then, once we get that, we'll bring that back all for discussion.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, Matt?
Just before I start, in case I sound negative anyway, I'm a huge fan of this whole process. I love all the pictures you've gone through. I think it's a great idea, but as, from sitting up here, we've heard kind of the same thing a few times now, you know, starting back from August or whenever we kind of started this process. And I know that we had originally planned on meeting every week in January. That all got canceled, meeting every week in February, and we really haven't met since. I mean, I think we approved minutes from November, you know? And so, I know that at one time, there was a very ambitious plan that would be getting us information that we could review and go over and get this process going. And I guess from the fear that I have is that this just bogs down and, you know, in six months, we're having the same conversation, we're showing the same great graphics and all looks good, but yet we're nowhere near having anything concrete and put down. I guess, I guess the question is, is what can you say to put my fears to rest that we're not already in the process of being bogged down since we canceled three months' worth of meetings and we're still nowhere near closer, I guess, to getting something we can review?
Right. The, when we started this, really and truly, we came in with preconceived notions and what we knew, you know, about zoning. And when we started to unravel this and going back to the DNA, we had to challenge ourselves to get out of our box. Really and truly, we've been drafting documents, writing charts for Bastrop. We came up with all of these standards. I've had Jordan create numerous charts and graphs that I end up just throwing directly in the trash because it's not working out for what we're trying to accomplish to achieve these goals. We had to change our entire mindset about what development looks like, how it functions, how it gets built. The entire framework that we're proposing for Bastrop is extremely unique. I don't believe any city in the entire country's used this type of framework. And what's great is it's a framework that you have on the ground and we're just recalibrating it, writing it back into these standards. And so, I believe we did owe that to you. I wish we would have come to you all earlier to say, "Hey, we had a reset," you know? And we had been communicating with the staff and the city council and, but, and so, I apologize that there was a delay. From our perspective, really and truly, we looked up and it's like, "Oh, man, it's March," you know, because we have been constantly challenging ourselves about how these standards are going to come together. How are we going to truly achieve this? Do we deliver something that's unique and special? We're at a point where we're looking at how do lot dimensions, or do lots even matter? Are they important? What about new building types? And maybe we regulate off of street types? And so, we're challenging the entire paradigm of development. These are human settlement patterns. And all of the elements of these human settlement patterns are changing more than, more rapidly than we know. Parking, we talk about parking. Autonomous vehicles may be here in 10 years where everyone's in autonomous vehicles, right? You know, driverless cars. It wasn't too long ago that horse and buggies were, you know, the unit of measurement and everything was calibrated off of that. We are truly trying to think through timeless and adaptable. Your building patterns have been down here 186 years. I know you've heard that, but look at what's going on. They're making money. If you looked at the fiscal sustainability model that was presented to the council, last council meeting, we watched that, that presentation. And essentially, what's happening is the only place in Bastrop that's generating money currently is the downtown area. There's something to be said about that. It's been there 186 years and it's still generating more wealth than it costs to actually maintain it. And so, we have, we're shifting paradigms. I, I think that's, I don't know if that puts your worries at ease, but, but we're well on a path.
Well, can I have a follow-up on it, I guess? Because, I mean, I would never sit here and say, you know, don't make us authentic because, you know, it's, you know, our third, it's our largest guiding principle, which is like a type set. But, you know, at some point, we got to get something on paper, right? And I look at the downtown and I agree with you. I think it's fantastic. I think it's beautiful. But I think we all know from history that the downtown really developed under no development guidelines. And it was people just doing what worked for them at the time. I mean, you know, the chute, the cobbler you're talking about, that's, you know, a thousand square foot building, a thousand square foot lot. That was never a written code. It was just a guy that built a building and got in there. And so, I look at the uniqueness of downtown and realizing that there was really no guiding principle that led to that other than just, you know, laissez-faire, you know, get it done, you know, what works for you. And how are we going to take that and put that into writing without making it more than, say, 10,000 pages, you know, as far as how it uniquely adapts under each situation? You know? And, and so, I guess, I guess at some point, where do we kind of say, you know what? We've got a really good idea of what makes 90% of Bastrop, Bastrop. Let's go and create that on the new places, you know, rather than trying to get 99% of what makes Bastrop, Bastrop. I mean, where is our, where's our threshold where we're just like, okay, enough philosophy, let's put something on paper? Because I feel like we're still in that philosophical standpoint.
I think if we try to recreate or look at downtown Bastrop, it could actually be that we have fewer words on paper because we're going to have fewer restrictions and give more freedom for people to do what fits within a broad guideline.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, that's the way I look at it. But, but you're, and by the way, I know you've been doing what your contract calls for and what the city council has asked you to do, and you don't owe us an apology, I don't think. But we are anxious to get moving. And if we can start looking at pieces, parts, we would like to. Because we started this year and a half ago, you know? And I know you've been, you've been working hard and I'm giving you kudos because I know you've been working hard, but.
Yes, ma'am. And to address your, your conversation, we, we had the same dialogue that you, that you had. And we had to have that philosophical conversation to arrive. And so, what we've arrived at is that incrementalism is the solution. And that's the way they did it. And so, how do you code incrementalism? Well, we've, we've accomplished it. We're, we're now writing the regulations to truly achieve that without being over-restrictive. And going back to saying, we're in Texas in a pro-property rights state, how do we really achieve this? And we believe that we've got a framework. But again, our, we've got to take it to council to get the policy framework established. And then, I can come to you all and feel much more confident saying, all right, we've got our framework. Here's how it's going to work. Here's how it unfolds. Here's the standards. So, that's where we're at at this point. But I appreciate that. Thank you.
The thing we're going to be wanting to look at, which goes into the next item on the agenda, is how all this impacts our comprehensive plan. Because one of the things P&amp;Z is charged with is an annual review of the comprehensive plan. So, at the time that we are be, we'll be looking at the new zoning, I would expect that we would be looking at it as how it comports with the comprehensive plan or if the comprehensive plan needs some amendment. But I do want to make sure that that review takes place because that's one of the things we're supposed to do. Yeah?
Just had a follow-up comment. I'd rather you get it right. This is like you said, the next 30 years, you know, just let us know. I'm like everybody else, I think it's, it's great what you're doing. So, I'm excited. That's why I moved here. I did have one, you mentioned about how the administration, city administration would handle all that. Would like to see, you know, we're going to need a staff up. I think that, that is part of that, you know, maybe what other sized towns, what size of staff they have. I think we have a shortage of people here and what that would mean. And then, you think that you're coming out with how that would impact them and, and what recommendations you'd have for that.
Yes, sir. And, and we are working closely with staff to ensure that. But, I mean, he may want to speak to us, staffing.
That may not be his person to recommend more staffing. Anything else?
Yeah. Matt?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned you, you showed some nice examples, some illustrations that you had put up there. And you said you took plots of land from Bastrop and dropped them in here. Where were those plots of lands that you used to illustrate examples?
This one is the, I don't remember the name of the track. This is located off of the goat track. Oh, the Rosanki Track. Yeah, this is the Rosanki Track. It's a, 25 acres? Is that what's it? Yeah, 25 acres. This is a 25-acre parcel. This one is located.
For those who don't know, where is the Rosanki Track? Could you give us some streets?
It's between Riverside Grove and the Settlement Drive. That little strip of land, there's currently one single-family house and pasture land there.
And this one is located off of the frontage of Highway 71 and, is that Blakely?
That's still the Rosanki Track.
Oh, this is a different track. Oh. This is the goat track. Yeah, this one's the goat track.
That by Lowe's?
No, that's the, that's at 969, isn't it? This is, oh, this is the.
Yeah, that's the, that's the goat track.
So, it's the corner, it's, it's on the vacant lot with the goats across from Burleson Crossing.
Across from Burleson Crossing. And then, this one is.
That's the Rosanki.
That's the Rosanki Track. I'm sorry. This is Highway 71, frontage, that's the Rosanki Track. And this one is off of 969 and Blakely Lane. Is that the right one? Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from Matt? Thank you.
Thank you all.
So, for our other Matt, we will be looking at, not that Matt, not that Matt. We will be looking at their comprehensive plan as we look at the different coding, code areas.
Yes, ma'am. I don't know how you all want to tackle that. I think that's kind of the, the point of bringing this on the agenda this evening. We can do it, well, you can do it several ways. I don't know if it makes the most sense in, in time and energies to do it along the way or if it makes the most sense to wait till we get the codes adopted, hopefully, at the end of December and then review it comprehensively against the adopted codes. I'm willing to do it whichever way you all see fit. You all are the ones charged with doing that clearly. And so, however you all think is the most productive way of using everybody's time and energies and resources to do that, we can certainly take that approach.
With where you are right now and where the other Matt is, do you see a great need for amendments to the plan? Or is it more just looking and making sure that everything comports?
Yeah, I think if, if I were to do it, I would see the plan and then make the necessary amendments to the plan. I think that would be the most productive way to do it from a time and energy and resources standpoint, in my opinion. Because until the thing is adopted and, and it's on the shelf, ready for implementation, it, it could change. It's a living document, as is the comp plan. And so, until we get a final code that's adopted, ready for use, there still may be tweaks along the way that we would then have to come back and possibly do tweaks to the amendments that we've already made to the comp plan. So, it seemed most seamless to do it as a fail-swoop. And we can take that in sections as well. I think that would be wise to do. You know, the, the ordinance says annually, the charter actually just says y'all should do it. It doesn't give you an annual guideline. And I think there's one other place that's referenced, oddly enough, that says when needed. And so, it's certainly going to need some amendments as we, as we look at the different way of doing things. And so, I think I would leave that all to you. But if it was up to just a staff and our current resources and things of that nature, I would say if it's amenable that we could do it in, in one fail-swoop. But we can certainly make, any way that y'all see fit, proceed that way as well.
And there are some, also some things in the comprehensive plan that don't necessarily have to do with zoning.
No, ma'am.
And are not affected by.
That's correct. There are. Yeah.
So, I don't, what's, I don't know what the pleasure is of the commission. Do you want to look at some things that are not going to be affected by zoning changes? Or do you want to wait?
I think the idea of waiting until all the, the ordinance is done is waiting too late. I think we should start looking at it now. And as we start understanding what's coming out of the, the code changes, start looking at what is it we're going to have to do. Now, when the change to it's finally done, yeah, it'll all be done at once. But I think we need to start looking at that now. Start taking the pieces that we know that are changing and start looking at those in the comprehensive plan and starting to say, okay, this is where we're going to have to start making changes.
I'm not sure if we're going to know what needs changing until we have in front of us. I was looking, I was talking about mainly the capital improvements plan and some things like that that are not code-driven.
We, we're tackling our CIP right now. We've got projects on the books and we have things funded. So, we can certainly start looking at that. I don't, I don't have any problem with that. But as far as things that are dealing with the code updates, you know, I don't, my crystal ball's not working too good these days. So, I tend to like to do things once and measure twice, cut once kind of approach to it.
It's the cloudy weather and rain that make the clouds your crystal ball, I think.
There you go.
Yeah. Can I ask you a question though, on the, the recoding and zoning? And we are under the moratorium, so we do, we are in a timeframe that we have to be working in. So, it's not so vague on the coding because we have, we, this has to be done as part of the moratorium on drainage has got to be right. So, can you remind me of the moratorium date when that is, the building moratorium expires?
The drainage moratorium is set to expire in.
May 21st.
Okay.
Would be May, is when it's set to expire. These codes will not be ready by May. I think we have a tentative timeline in mind, but until we set that timeline, I don't know the exact dates. But I know that we don't have time to get the input and the coordination with, with P&amp;Z to have that done by May. But we still are under the drainage moratorium and through May.
Right. It's just, I'm thinking the moratorium, which was so smart to address the drainage, if, if we're, we need to be really close on the coding, don't we, and the zoning? So, we don't go back to where we were before the moratorium and have adverse effects?
Right. So, we're also working in conjunction with this or side by simultaneously, working with Strand to develop our drainage standards. They gave a presentation to, to council. I'd be happy to forward that presentation to you as well as the fiscal sustainability presentation that was given. That way, you all have that information as well. But we're, it's, it's coinciding. I, I don't know exactly what's going on as far as our timeline. Like I said, Matt Lewis and his team are still putting that together. When we tighten that up, I think we can begin to, to set a schedule to look at, you know, making updates to the comprehensive plan and certainly items that don't have much to do with the land use, we can start looking at those first. But I think the, the most important thing would be tackling these codes, getting something on paper. And that's going to involve a lot of your time and meetings. So, when we get that timeline, we can start filling in dates with the comp plan and some of those things.
Thank you. Comp plans are famous for being written and put on the shelf and, and collect dust. We had 12, 1,500 people that participated in writing this comp plan. And maybe I'm more sensitive to it because I was one of the ones that were on the committee. But I think this commission is interested in making sure that this living document that is taking us to at least 2036 is that. And it doesn't just sit on a shelf and collect dust. And we want to make sure that these massive changes for, I think, the better, that we anticipate is integrated in that, that comp plan. And if we can start looking at some things that aren't affected by what the other Matt's looking at, that might be a way to start looking at it.
Sure.
If the commission feels the same way. I'm feeling odd.
Yeah, I do. I think, I think that's a good idea is the stuff that's not related to the codes, which there's a lot of other stuff, start taking those pieces off and getting out of the way. So, it's, you get the codes done, we've got that done, and then, we can start focusing on those. And the other one is if we've got to meet more often than once a month to do this, then let's meet more than once a month.
Oh, you will have to. Get ready. Yes, ma'am. One thing I do want to say to, to that point is this comprehensive plan is alive and, and I think Matt and his team will, will attest that our city manager has highlighted, has marked pages more than any comprehensive plan I've ever seen. So, really, some of the things that are coming to life in, in the codes that Matt is writing are coming straight from that comprehensive plan. You'll see over and over the themes of that comp plan, walkability, fiscal sustainability, geographically sensitive are all living things in your comprehensive plan that you all work tirelessly on. And we're not throwing that away or setting aside. If anything, these new codes are honoring that document. And so, more of than amending it, I think, we'll just be coming through and, and tweaking it in areas where probably it might have reflected current codes that now need to reflect our new codes.
Your city manager has, has dog-eared it and marked it up and your mayor chaired the, the committee that wrote it.
Okay, well, there you go.
So, you got two folks there.
Cry while there's so much attention there, yeah. Sure. So, if I, if I hear you correctly, we will start looking at, at things that are not directly related to these new codes. And we'll start bringing those forward as items for discussion. Now, do you think, it's broken down into sections. Are you all comfortable looking at each section at one time? And we'll, we'll agenda one section until we get through with it. Maybe you'll take a meeting, maybe you'll take two, three. I'm not sure how long it'll take us to get through them. And then, we will agenda the next one. Would that be amenable to you all?
Everybody, right? Yes.
It's, well, is, is it by section? Is each section a separate topic by itself?
Yes.
Yeah, then let's do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything else? Thank you. Item 3D, discussion regarding planning and zoning commission training with the city attorney.
Yes. So, our city attorney, Alan, could not be here this evening. So, what we would like to do is just schedule some basic commissioner training with, that's specific to P&amp;Z and zoning. So, we all had the board orientation. I think that was very helpful. But, but one thing that, that we would like to do is get Alan in here and let's go through some actual P&amp;Z. I know a lot of you have done this a very long time. I learn something new every day, believe it or not. So, I think it'd be useful just to have him in here and, and go through some, some training with him. And if anything else, get some face time, get some familiarity there and, and do that. He could not be here this, this evening for scheduling conflicts. So, what I can do, and, and we didn't want to push it off too far, so I do have some alternative dates that he's available. Or if these don't work, we can just start seeing when his next availability is for our regularly scheduled meeting. So I have some dates. Um, you can write them down. I'll email them to you after the meeting. And you'll have to forgive me, I was out this week until today with the flu, so, um, a lot of the.
Welcome back. I'm glad you came.
A lot of my week kind of got shot. So, um, I apologize for not getting these to you in advance. But, uh, one day that he has available is March 14th. That's a Thursday. Uh, the next availability would be March 27th, which would actually be the day before our regular meeting. Then he has two dates in April before our April meeting. Um, one is Tuesday, April 16th or Wednesday, April 17th. That is actually a HLC meeting. Um, we could, we could get some alternative arrangements there if that's the best date for everybody. But again, we'll send these out to you this evening. And if just none of these work and we can't get everybody together, then we'll just try to get him at the next regularly scheduled meeting that, that works.
How long do you think that would take?
It'll probably be, um, probably no more than 30 minutes, uh, depending on the interaction. You know, if we like to talk, we could be here an hour. It just kind of depends.
There, when we, when I first got on the commission, we had a training and one of the things that came up was the huge amount of state laws that are written that are specifically for P and Z. And I think that's one of the items that he needs to bring to us is so we're all aware of, here is what the state law says that we have to operate in. And then there's the city ordinances, procedures below that, but that's state law. Cause it, it puts some pretty strict rules on what P and Z can do.
Attorneys tend to like to talk about those things, so if that was not included, I'd be surprised, but we'll make sure that that's in there.
Thank you.
Sure. And so if you all, all could just, you know, we're not in, in super hurry. But if, we'll all email those out to you in the next couple of days or so. If whichever dates of those would work, just email myself or Viviana and if it does, we'll get it scheduled and let you all know.
Well, how does everybody feel about doing it before we, or as part of one of our regular meetings? Or would you rather come? Would you? Pablo, how do you feel?
I know I'll be out on the 14th, but yeah, any day after that, it looks good to me.
How about, how about having it in conjunction with our regular meeting?
Agreed.
Okay.
So I'll see his, I know he's not available in March. I'll check April and then we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All righty. For item 4A, update on recent city council actions regarding planning department items.
So since our last me, uh, meeting, we only have had one item that went from P and Z to city council. And that was the McElroy Acres Plat. And council did approve that plat. It, um, was subdividing a property into two commercial lots and one agricultural slash residential lot in the back. There was some, uh, discuss, a lot of discussion on that about the relocation of the right of way, which council did, um, approve. And now we're waiting on the, um, the owner actually to come in with the rest of the plans to continue that project, so. But if he does not come forward with the rest of the plans, the, the right of way relocation will not happen. So that's part of the contingency on that.
How long does he have to come in?
He had, uh, 180 days.
180?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, now.
Looking at your crystal ball, do you see anything potentially coming at us in the next couple of months?
Uh, we have several projects that'll be coming over the next couple of months with Pecan Park, some, uh, a preliminary plat and a couple of final plats. Or no, you guys, preliminary plats, definitely preliminary plats will be coming.
For Pecan Park?
For Pecan Park. Yeah, they're going to do the remainder of the property in one preliminary plat.
That includes their commercial or just the residential?
No, it's just the residential.
Okay.
Oh, that was begun before the moratorium. So they were grandfathered in. Do we have any other requests, uh, for particular items to be on future agendas, although Matt has a few already? Does anybody have anything to talk about that we have not brought up yet? Okay, thank you. Um, that brings us to item five. I will accept a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you. At 6:54, under an hour.